Plan on having another study session, the first of December. That we will get into a lot of the land use definitions and details of our actual. Like I said, land use, land use definitions. Tonight, as I hand it over to Darcy here in a few minutes. Tonight is really finalizing city heights within our specific plan area. Floor area ratios, FARs within the specific plan area, bulk scale and massing discussion. So we have an hour and a half. I will hand it over to Darcy so she can have a few introductory comments handed over to our consulting team. But I'm pretty excited of where we are relative to our height limits and FARs and kind of the vision and where we're headed as a city, especially along the El Camino corridor and within our downtown. So without any further ado, welcome everyone. Fantastic to see you and I'll introduce Ms. Darcy Smith, our Community Development Director.
Okay. Would you guys like to do roll call or lunch before we start our?
Let's go ahead and do roll call, Elaine.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Councilmember Hollibur. Councilmember Feng. Councilmember Papin. Vice Mayor Leva. Mayor Snyder. Commissioner Del Negro. Commissioner Quigg. Commissioner Wong. Vice Chair Davis. Chair Joe. All members of the Millbrae City Council and Planning Commission are present.
Thank you, City Clerk. Ms. Darcy, go ahead.
Great. Good evening. Can you see my PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great. Oh, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and members of the City Council and Planning Commission. Very excited to be here tonight. My name is Darcy Smith, the Community Development Director for the City Millbrae. And we're here tonight for a study session for an update on the downtown and El Camino Real specific plan and the housing element, housing opportunity sites analysis. I'll be presenting this item along with two of our key consultants, Jim Stickley, who's a principal at WRT. And Punam Nakkar, who's a senior associate. They'll present on the specific plan and then I'll be back towards the end of the presentation to cover the housing element topic. So the objectives and agenda for tonight's meeting is for you first to receive that presentation. And we'd like to roll through the presentation and then after that, we'll have time for questions and answers and public comments. And then we'll end by getting your comments to us regarding the land use designations, focusing again on some certain areas and the housing elements analysis. So we're seeking commission on some critical items and I'll bring this slide up at the end. And as the city manager mentioned, it's really focused on some, some numbers. So the maximum building heights that you'll see and were distributed before the meeting, the floor ratios and the residential densities. And why are we here now? Well, it's really critical to get your feedback on these numbers to finalize the plan. We are working on the administrative draft of the specific plan and hope to have that done in just a few weeks. But a critical piece that these numbers feed into is a really important infrastructure analysis. That's really critical to ensure that the city is planning for and has fees in place ultimately to fund the capital, infrastructure and facilities to serve this new development and the sequo analysis. This project requires a really lengthy EIR, environmental impact report. And that analysis is cranking behind the scenes and a stay on schedule and get this before you for adoption next year, we need to finish this. And as you know, we're also working on the housing element and the site inventory that I'll step through later on is a really critical piece of that to ensure that our housing element stays on track for adoption. And the deadline for that is January 2023, but a lot of the items that we're talking about tonight have to be in place next year. So again, I'll bring this slide up at the end to remind you what we really are focusing on, your feedback on tonight. And I know you're really excited. You probably looked at the plan diagrams and had a list of 20 questions about it. But save those items. If we have time at the end, we will, we can talk about other things based on your review now. But we'll be right back before you for another joint City Council Planning Commission Study Session in about two months, which I know sounds like a long time away, but we're going to do a lot of work between that now and then. And then we can discuss the plan in more detail. But tonight, we really need to face, stay focused on these topics. So with that, I'll hand it over to Jim for the specific plan update.
Great. Thanks, Darcy. Jim Stickley, Principal with WRT. We're planning and design consultant based here in San Francisco and in Philadelphia. I want to first say that I have an abrupt stop at seven o'clock. We're in an awkward situation where we're going before another city council this evening to talk about downtown density and height limits. And it was an unavoidable conflict. So I hope no one will take offense. Punam will stay on to continue with the, with the Q and A. So the place where the, the three important items that Darcy referred to, heights, FARs and densities, the place where that is regulated is in this, the specific plan. The downtown and El Camino Real specific plan. This diagram shows the extents of that specific plan minus the gray zone, which is the station area plan, which was already adopted and updated in 2016. However, the specific plan for what's called the PDA, which encompasses the El Camino Real corridor as well as the downtown, is closely coordinated with, you know, the densities, with the circulation and public space strategies and the heights of the station area plan. Next slide. It's also a, a unique opportunity that the downtown and El Camino Real specific plan is being done simultaneously with the general plan. It's actually part of the same contract and the effort is what we call nested within the general plan effort. So it's being very closely coordinated with the general plan team. And at the same time, the active transportation plan is being finalized. And we're also coordinating very closely with that team so that our circulation strategies really dovetail very tightly with particularly along the El Camino Real corridor. Next slide. And so here's where we are in the schedule. This is a process that began clear back in 2015. We've done a lot of work. There's been a couple of pauses, some COVID related, some other. But we're working our way up to the point where we are now, where we're starting the drafting process for the specific plan and the general plan. And we've done a lot of work in, in that timeframe with staff, with the community in a series of workshops. And then once we have the comments from, from these two groups this evening, we can proceed to the drafting process and also initiate the zoning amendments and objective standards process. And then the whole bundle of initiatives will, will undergo its sequo analysis. Next slide. So some of you may recall the, the workshops we did with the community. We got a lot of great feedback through these workshops and a lot of the ideas have withstood the test of time in terms of the community's desires for a walkable downtown, a much more human and walkable El Camino Real corridor, where we should prioritize density and infill, what kinds of land uses should be, should be allowed and also what the benefits packages want to be to make better quality open space and, and just a better quality walkable downtown. So next slide. And all of that led to a planning framework, which is illustrated by this diagram, which shows the intermodal station and station area plan as what we're calling a regional anchor. And then a district that connects that regional anchor to a community anchor. That is the orange district, which is the downtown. So it's something that needs to be easily accessible from the station area and leads you farther north on Broadway and farther north on El Camino Real. Then there would be a community anchor in this pink zone. And then as you go further north, it would be predominantly residential uses. And at the very north, a neighborhood anchor. So that concept has led to the land use strategies and also the density and height strategies that we're going to talk about this evening. Next slide. So this is the resulting land use plan and the land use designations. So there are consistent with the framework plan that I just described. There are several new land use designations that we are proposing for the El Camino Real corridor and for downtown. The first is downtown mixed use, which is the red zone. And this is really concentrated around the, the main portion of Broadway as well as the, where the frontage streets exist along El Camino Real. Second is the corridor mixed use, which is the blue zone. And this is an area of, of what you might call priority infill along the El Camino Real corridor and somewhat along the Broadway corridor as well. Going further north would be residential mixed use. So this would be a zone in orange that allows higher density infill residential, but also encourages other ground floor uses that can help activate the street. And then there are some areas of residential mixed use in the southern portion of the specific plan area that would be similar in the mix of uses, similar in the allowance of higher density. But the heights would be lower in these areas in sensitivity to adjacent residential neighborhoods. And then lastly, sorry, one more, sorry, Darcy. Lastly, the, the little zone clear at the northern tip is what we're calling neighborhood commercial mixed use. And that would be encouraging a very activated street frontage with retail and other activating uses. And then either residential or office uses above, but within limited height allowances. Again, in sensitivity to the residential neighborhoods in this area. And next. So each of those land use designations, which will be depicted in these next two slides, has certain strategies that go along with it. So first, taking that red zone around the central part of Broadway, the downtown mixed use. The idea here is that we do allow some increased density, but, but controlling the height so that we can retain the existing character and scale of Broadway, which has come again and again as being very important to the community. But allowing mixed use, really encouraging a base of local businesses, allowing up to 55 feet of height, which is a little taller than what some of the existing two and three story buildings are now. And we're going to show a little bit more about how we derive that and what that looks like. An FAR of somewhere between two and a half and three and a half. And then residential densities that might reach between 25 and 50 DUs per acre if residential is developed above the ground floor uses. And again, that's if, because office would also be allowed in this district. The second land use designation is the corridor mixed use. And this is the use predominantly in the lower portion of the El Camino Real corridor, which is the blue zone in the diagram we just looked at. And this is really a great opportunity for some higher intensity mixed use. Generally allowing heights up to 85 feet, allowing FARs up to two and a half to three and a half. And, and allowing some quite high residential densities of 70 up to 130 DUs per acre. These would allow both resident, this district would allow both residential and office development. Either is allowed, either is encouraged. It's ideal to have a mix of the two so that we can encourage a 24 hour corridor. But always with some sort of activating ground floor. Not necessarily retail the whole way, because the market for retail is very sensitive right now. So we don't want to flood the market with, with retail that will become vacant. But certain key corners are designated as retail and others are where we're encouraging other active uses like community, meeting rooms and, and residential lobbies and, and things of that nature. Next slide, please. And so then the last two land use categories that I mentioned, the residential mixed use, which is predominantly moving. Oh, sorry, I didn't mention one important thing on the last slide, Darcy, if you could go back one. The, I wanted to mention that the heights allowed on El Camino Real are generally 85 feet. But those would step down on, as you go outward from the corridor up against residential edges, down to 65 feet. And there would be one zone where the, the, in the, remember I mentioned the community anchor, where there are particularly large parcels that might lend themselves to have development up to 125 feet. And the reason that the large parcels make that possible and achievable is because you have space to have a higher portion of the project towards the center of the parcel and then be able to step down a little bit as you go out to street frontages. So I just wanted to mention why the, we're showing all three of those heights on this designation. And next slide. So the residential mixed use is the orange area that I talked about, which is stretching north on El Camino Real. That continues with an 85 feet height allowance. But all, but as we get out to the edges and closer to, to existing residential neighborhoods, that steps down to 55 feet of, of height allowance. FARs would be around one and a half to two and a half. Housing densities might reach up to 70 DUs per acre. And then lastly, the, the small zone at the, at the very north end, the neighborhood commercial mixed use. This would be a smaller scale mixed use, sort of neighborhood destination with ground floor retail. And then some additional height allowance for upper floor uses. Maybe two to four levels up to 55 feet, encouraging both residential and office uses in that, on those upper floors. And with an FAR of two to two and a half and perhaps 10 DUs per acre of residential when it's residential being developed in that area. So I think that's it for me. I'm going to turn it over to Punam, who's going to describe a little bit about the process of how we worked with, with the city staff and with our internal team to test these, these different height and density thresholds.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, everyone. Punam Narke, Senior Associate with WRT. As Jim was explaining the range of heights and FARs associated with each land use designation, we used the 3D model as a, as a very, this was a very useful tool for us as we iterated scenarios of building heights for staff input during our study sessions. And this really helped us keep in context some of the development proposals that, that the city has received recently. And understand, you know, what the scale and the compatibility of infill development would be, where the heights need to step down and what is the range of heights that we need to really be looking at as we, as we arrive at these recommendations. It also really helped us test development typology, taking into consideration financial feasibility of a project, of a development project based on parcel size, construction type, parking need, as well as understanding sun shading and sun patterns and good urban design elements. So what we see here is the buildings that are in dark teal are the buildings that represent recent development proposals that the city has received. And you can see here, there are a couple of callouts here that say TOD develop, TOD one, which is within the MSASP Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan. And those are the development proposals that have come out of that specific plan. And they provide a really good context in terms of the heights that this specific plan is recommending. The buildings in light blue are, are buildings that we have tested as infill development and the range of heights that this specific plan is recommending. So this one, as you can see, is oriented towards this transit station. And next slide, please. Now we are going to turn around and face the north. So here we can see a couple of the other proposed developments, 1100 El Camino Real, which is on the El Rancho Hotel property and 959 El Camino Real as proposed development. Next slide. So this is the height diagram that was included also in your study package. And the various iterations that we did using the 3D model are reflected in this diagram. As we started to take a nuanced approach at the building heights along El Camino Real, which are not standard. So as you can see, within some, in some stretches, the development, the building heights are 85 feet. And as we keep going north, the, taking into consideration the adjacent existing neighborhoods, the building heights are coming down to 55 feet. On the east side of El Camino Real, we are, we also are looking at slightly lower heights of 65 feet where the parcel depths are smaller. And just based on the type, the, the intensity of development that it can actually realistically take, the building heights are determined accordingly. And in the downtown core, the building heights are matched at 55 feet. Next slide. So what you're going to see in the next series of slides is while we did a, a high level, you know, study using the 3D model, we also wanted to really understand how these building heights work in relation to the streets. And, you know, what, what the on the ground view and experience of these buildings would be. So this is, and this is a cross section through El Camino Real in the three blocks that has a fronted street. So it is a pretty wide right of way of almost 160 feet wide from building edge to building edge currently. And the, according to good urban design principles, an optimal building height, height to street ratio, street width ratio is one is to two to ensure that there is enough daylighting in the street environment as well as you're able to see the sky and it's, your views are not blocked down the corridor. And this section, cross section just really illustrates that nicely that we have actually been able to achieve that optimal ratio for the most part where we are going up, up to a maximum building height of 85 feet. Next slide. And this is a segment of El Camino Real without the fronted street, so the right of way is narrower. It's 120 feet wide. And while we are still allowing an 85 foot building height, we are also making recommendations for building step backs. And those recommendations for building step backs would occur all along El Camino Real to ensure appropriate scale and pedestrian friendly environment.
Sorry, just one thing, Punam, on that one. We definitely want to encourage on this northern portion of El Camino Real, this notion of stoops on some of the residential buildings so that we really have an active edge where you have the entries to residential where you might not have, you know, a ground floor activating use.
Yeah, good point. And to add to that, as Jim mentioned earlier, having retail along the entire stretch of the corridor is not ideal. So what we are encouraging though, as active frontage, there can be a wide variety of uses, including building entrances, community rooms, you know, co-working spaces or even small office spaces depending on what is appropriate on that particular parcel in relation to its context. So next one. So this slide really is, the primary purpose of this slide is to just represent what buildings at different heights would look like, as this is the range that we would see along El Camino Real. These examples are not meant to be examples for architectural styles. That is going to be addressed and in build, in design guidelines in the specific plan as well as using development standards for bulk enassing and setbacks and step backs to articulate, to make sure that the buildings are well articulated as well as have good materials and all the required elements that are really important to create a vibrant corridor. Next. This slide is a cross section, showing a cross section through Broadway Street. So Broadway is certainly a narrower street, 66 feet wide and with parking on both sides. And this is an exam, this is a scenario where there is an existing three story tall building, which goes up to about 35 feet tall. And on the right side, we are exploring what a maximum building height of 55 feet, how would that be in relation to an existing building? And this also, again, in terms of maintaining the optimal ratio of one is to two, it works pretty well. And the, this is where we are identifying a step back at the fourth, for the fourth story to maintain that compatibility of scale with the existing building as well as the optimal ratio. Next slide. And this is just a scenario in case both sides of the, of the street were to have buildings that went up to 55 feet. We don't envision that there will be a, a mass turnover of the downtown, you know, of the downtown blocks. We, you know, the vision is to still continue to maintain the quaint character of the downtown, the very walkable character of the downtown. But there are opportunities in the downtown, especially on parcels that are larger parcels and that are at street intersections where the building heights could go taller. That would allow for upper floor residential development or even office development, just bringing more residents and workers to the downtown to support local, support the businesses that are in the downtown. And at the same time, maybe.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is the mayor. I'm interrupting. I understand that Planning Direct, Community Development Director wanted us to hold questions at the end. I've got a page of questions. So I, I, I'm not going to ask them here, but I don't see how we're going to handle them in an hour and a half with these rather frankly huge changes that you all are recommending. Darcy, do you have a suggestion?
Well, we're almost done with the presentation, so let's just get to that. And if we can get through everything by seven o'clock, we can come back and, for another meeting.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
Thank you for your patience. And this is the last slide on the street sections. There's just one more slide that represents the different heights as, as examples. And then from here, I'll turn it over to Darcy.
So I'm back. Darcy Smith, you are Community Development Director for the Housing Element Update. Just a few slides and then we can cover questions. So the housing element preparation is well underway and it's being integrated, as we discussed previously, with the specific plan and the general plan update. And right now, we are in the phase where we're working on studies and analysis and outreach. So if you haven't been attending some of the community meetings, check out letstalkhousing.org/events. They're ramping up for some more meetings in October, November, December and doing some great community outreach. And so one of the most important pieces that the city's been working on is this housing opportunity sites analysis, which I'll step through on the next few slides. The housing element, which is really dictated by state law, requires an inventory of land suitable and available for residential development to meet the city's regional housing needs allocation arena numbers looking to the next cycle, which is from 2023 to 2021. So I've shown this slide to you a few times in the past when we've talked about housing, so I just want to show it up really fast. But the arena allocation for the City Millbrae is just under 2,200 units. However, as part of the planning process, the state has directed cities to include a buffer. That the typical buffer that we're working on right now is about 30%, which would increase our target to about 2850, 2,850 units. But again, there's some breakdowns by income categories, which are really critical to look at because it's not just zoning for 2,850 units, but. but zoning for opportunity sites for these different affordability levels that you see here. So as I mentioned, that site inventory is a really critical required component of the housing element, and it's heavily scrutinized by the state. Sometimes cities go back and forth a few times because the state reviews them carefully to ensure that the sites that are on that are appropriate and viable for future development. The state has pages and pages of criteria based on state law that defines that in more detail that I won't go into now. But another critical thing is that the zoning is not in place by the time the housing element is adopted. And that's no later than January of twenty twenty-three. Then the state dictates that the rezoning after that must establish by right zoning for future residential development projects. That's a ministerial review based on objective standards, such as the ones Punam was discussing, requiring, for example, numerical step backs of the building. So staff recommends that the city ensure that all appropriate zoning and related development standards, the heights densities floor ratios that we talked about tonight and other objective standards that we'll be working on, that will be included in the plan are adopted as part of the specific plan. And again, we're on target to present the final plan to the city council in fall twenty twenty-two. And if that doesn't happen, well, then we could potentially not have a housing element that's in compliance with state law. So I just want to emphasize it's really important to get this new zoning in place. That's why we're going to do this exercise now. That's why Jim's running off to Santa Clara later. All the cities in the Bay Area region are going through this exercise and realizing they need the zoning in place and it can't be deferred. So the good news is that the preliminary analysis that staff and our consultants completed found that with these added densities and heights that we just presented to you in this plan area, that along with pipeline development and other sources of development, such as accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwellings, that up to about five thousand new units could be developed. But I want to pause there because that sounds like a big number, but that's probably not going to be the final number. We have about one thousand two hundred and fifty units in the pipeline. But again, as you know, a lot of those are above moderate units. The majority of them are above moderate units. So only some of those will count towards the very low, low and moderate income criteria. Then we have a small remaining capacity in the Millbury Stationery specific plan. We analyzed available sites. Looks like there's potential for just under three hundred units there. But the good news there is the zoning is in place, no changes are anticipated. And as Jim mentioned, this new plan is well coordinated with that Millbury Stationery specific plan. So that's good. Within this downtown and El Camino Real specific plan, the heights and densities and floor ratios that were presented previously would lead to opportunities for the creation of approximately three thousand two hundred and ninety units. So that number is our, is a, is a, you know, an estimate. I do anticipate that when we dive deeper into the sites analysis, that some, that number will go down. But it's still a solid number for us to work on in trying to achieve our arena targets, which I'll just go back. Our target there is about twenty-eight fifty units. But if you look at the very low, low and modern income categories, that's fifty-eight percent of the units. And so we do need to make sure that we're selecting sites that have high potential to be developed at that very low and low income level. And those generally are sites on transit corridors, well-served by infrastructure and in close proximity to jobs. And those projects, as we saw at the gateway, will rank higher in eligibility for federal tax credits, such as the Gateway Affordable Housing Project. So again, what you saw presented previously, the heights and densities and floor ratios, allow the city to stay on track and have the appropriate zoning in place for those arena numbers. So why would we want to focus growth in this area? Well, I'll emphasize there's a lot of benefits to that. It will allow us to meet one of our really important general plan strategic guiding principles, which is to preserve and enhance the city's existing residential neighborhoods. And this buffer that we have right now will allow us to dive deeper and examine these sites. I anticipate that some of these sites may be removed from the site inventory as we progress through the process and review with the state housing community development department and their requirements. And again, some may be developed with mostly above moderate units. Some of these sites may also be developed for commercial uses and then they would come off the list. So again, we've been encouraged to have a healthy buffer, not just focus on the arena number of about twenty-two hundred units, but go higher because if not, we'd have to come back mid-cycle with the housing element for an update. So in conclusion, we're seeking feedback from you tonight on the land use designations, but more specifically the numbers, the heights, the floor ratios and the residential densities. And we need input now to stay on schedule. And if we do run out of time, we'll come back as soon as possible, continue this meeting to a, another meeting to get your input so we can stay on schedule. So that concludes my staff report. The city team and consultant team is here to answer any questions. And if it helps you through your discussion, we can bring back up these slides so you can see the information to, to frame your discussion if that helps.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Before I open it up to council and then planning commissioners, a question. I know you want us to concentrate on density and floor area ratio. But the diagrams that you showed, showed El Camino at its current width and Broadway at its current width. And then you did the, the daylighting based on that. And I had hoped that we would be considering El Camino much narrower and Broadway, if we add wider sidewalks, that the street would become much narrower. So how do we actually comment on height when we're hoping that the streets themselves will give us some land back?
So great question. The, the streets would still remain the width that they are now. They would just be used for different purposes, such as wider sidewalks and narrow travel lanes or bike facilities. So when planners talk about the street width, that would stay set. But the actual utilization of the street would evolve and become much more pedestrian bike friendly complete streets.
Yeah, another way.
The right of way, the right of way stays the same.
The right of way stays the same. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so if, for example, along El Camino on the east side, we were able to add some restaurants that want outdoor seating and we widen the sidewalk another ten feet, it wouldn't change the shading.
Right.
Okay, thank you. With that, if, there is a public member, public member will get to you if there is time. Right now, this is for city council and then planning, if you could please raise your hand. And I see Councilwoman Pappen, please go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, Mary, can I, can I real quick? I, I made an error, muscle memory. It's actually Jean-Joe is the chair of the planning commission. I stand corrected, so I apologize for that error. I just want to make sure that everyone knew that.
Is that Jean then is the hand that was raised?
No, I just, I, I made an error. I had introduced Kathy Quigg as the current chair, but it's actually Commissioner Joe, so I apologize.
Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Pappen.
Thank you very much. I love the presentation. Thank you. And the three D really, really helps. So that's kind of a new way for us to actually visualize this. I will say it's kind of difficult when you're talking feet, like sixty-five feet, eighty-five feet. For those of us who don't speak the language, as to how many floors that is, how many stories. So if you could, in the future, kind of simplify that for us. My concern would be, and I know we're going to stick within this realm here, but always circulation and access. So is that being included in the dynamic? Because when you talk about density and all of that, I, you don't have to give me an answer here, but it is vitally important to the way the city flows. And we know what happened at the BART station and that one's going to be a disaster. So again, you don't have to answer that here, but it is of concern to me. Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I may, to answer the council members' question. So Darcy, correct me if I'm wrong, in terms of a benchmark, the development on TOD two is eighty-five feet. So that's eighty-five feet. Vince Musey's project that you probably all familiar with is, is right around sixty-five feet.
It doesn't tell me how many stories, people. I mean, just.
It's about twelve feet, twelve, twelve feet per story, the average.
Thank you.
City, city manager, I thought TOD one, Vince Musey's project was a hundred and ten feet.
No, I'm talking about his Magnolia at Millbury project. I'm sorry. Project is, is right around sixty-five feet, so I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hollibur.
Thank you. I believe typically what the first floor is about fifteen feet and then every four above that is ten feet. So it's roughly, you know, minus five and then divide by ten to get to the number of stories typically. There's all great work on all of this. Glad to see that this is moving along quickly. A few questions. First question was about the range of densities that are within the various land use designations. So for example, the corridor mixed use, it says housing density seventy to a hundred thirty units per acre. That's a pretty wide range. So is that maybe correlated with the height? Seventy units per acre would be at the sixty-five foot limit, whereas a hundred thirty per acre would be at the hundred twenty-five foot limit. Is that how that works?
Let's.
Darcy, I can.
Heard of Jim or Punam. Great.
Yeah, so I'm glad you asked this question because I think we need to clarify DU's per acre, dwelling units per acre. So the, the ranges are purposely a wide range because there can be a lot of variation depending on a number of things. And the plan would not and should not regulate dwelling units per acre. This would be more like a form-based code where you're defining an envelope. Land use is somewhat flexible within that envelope. And the number of dwellings per acre also would want to be flexible. It, it depends on what size units any given developer or development is proposing. So if it's, you know, larger family oriented units that are, you know, two bedroom, maybe up to three bedroom, that's going to be a lower DU's per acre. If it's, you know, more like singles housing or young, young workers housing, it's going to be more like studios and one bedrooms. And that's going to be a much higher dwelling units per acre. So I think the, the, the range of dwelling units per acre that you're seeing is dictated by both the range of FAR that corresponds to it, but also the range in unit sizes that you could get in, in any given project.
Okay, but in terms of, sure, go ahead.
If I can just add some more nuance to it. So it also is dependent on the parcel sizes along the, or, you know, any given location because an FAR number on a smaller parcel size doesn't, will translate to a different DU per acre than the same FAR number on a larger parcel size.
Okay.
Right, just because your FAR is, you know, related to how big your parcel is and so how tall you can go and how much total square footage you can get and how many units you can fit in it. So when you have a smaller parcel size, your density dwelling units per acre is going to be lesser, even sometimes with a much higher FAR.
Okay, so I know you're going to be working to refine all of this for the plan, but I just want it to be, you know, crystal clear if a developer comes in and, you know, they claim, well, the city allows up to a hundred thirty units per acre and the city says, we're only allowing seventy units per acre. I think it needs to be very clear on any given parcel, what the maximum objective standard would be in terms of the maximum number of units per acre. So we don't get into any type of, you know, confusion or any type of conflict at any point down the road. I also noticed in terms of the various land use designation, there doesn't seem to be a commercial zoning designation called mixed use of some sort of or another. And is that mainly to try to make sure that we can accommodate the arena numbers and the buffer beyond arena numbers?
So commercial office would be allowed within these mixed use designations. So for example, you could have a commercial office building within the, the blue zone along El Camino Real. Those proposals are not tending to come across right now in great numbers. Most, most of the proposals and, and the market itself is really focusing on residential. But the mixed use designation would allow those commercial uses.
Okay. Could we potentially zone certain parcels or certain areas as exclusively commercial? I'm thinking, for example, of the hotel sites of maybe the Millbury Square property that are, you know, strong revenue generation sites for the city. I'm concerned that at some point these sites could potentially be purchased and be redeveloped in a way that ends up, you know, costing the city money and really impacting our, our general fund revenues by eliminating those revenue generating sources.
Well, Darcy, you may want to weigh in, but I, I think what we're always trying to do is balance what the community wants and being deliberate about certain things like you're suggesting. We would love for a hotel to be here. We would love for a cultural use to be here. We're trying to balance those kinds of, of community desires with flexibility because what the flexibility does is it actually attracts the developers. They may come in with their own idea about something that really works for them. And it also might be something that they, that the community is okay with. So I think it's a, you know, I think what you're asking is, is definitely something to look at. And as we draft the plan, we're going to just want to balance those very deliberate must-have moves with, with the flexibility of the plan.
I think it's important to note, you know, Millbury is a small city. We have limited budget, limited resources. And, you know, I, I understand that we need to accommodate the arena numbers and we'll, we'll do that. But, you know, every, we're only three square miles of Millbury. Every inch is, is valuable to us. So if we can look to, you know, preserve some of those key revenue sources, that would be useful. I also wonder if there could be, you know, in, in terms of trying to create a balance of, you know, commercial and residential development. I like the idea of the active frontages, especially one the El Camino corridor or one downtown. I'm wondering if we could also either require or encourage in some way, you know, commercial maybe on the second floor or third floor of these buildings. If there's going to be a, a seven or eight story building, I'd like a little bit more than, than just the ground floor to be commercial, I think would be useful to make sure that we have an active daytime population within Millbury. We don't really have large employment centers. I think that would be very valuable for our small businesses downtown. And also for revenue generation as well. Maybe encourage startup businesses to move into Millbury. It's sort of like a second floor type of office space that's created. So just sort of my two cents for now, and there's still a lot of work to be done on this. But something I'd like to see considered in the front of it.
Yeah, those are some great ideas.
Thank you. Mr. Stickley, you don't have to raise, raise your hand, use that function. Just, just feel free to comment, to ask and, and respond as well as other staff on that. I do see Commissioner, Planning Commissioner Del Negro, but I see Gina's hand up and Vice Mayor and Councilman Fung. Don't, don't spend waiting at close to seven o'clock to comment. Gina, go ahead.
Yeah, one quick comment along the lines of what Ruben just said here. I don't know how this works, but there are new developments that are live work. I don't know how that counts as far as Rena. I don't know how you zone for that, but it is becoming significantly a part of reality. So I don't know if we thought about that, if we could get further information on that as we move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Fung.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great work, team. This is something that we've been looking forward to. I'm glad it is finally in front of us. One thing that, first thing that comes to my mind is that as we approach rezoning our downtown and our El Camino Real corridor, it's the key word is affordability. Right? So, you know, I understand that we're talking about, you know, building height density and floor area ratio today. But, you know, in terms of how these numbers are, are being, going to be interpreted and going to be used later on as, you know, developer comes in and look at it. So if I were to put on the hat of a developer, you know, how do I ensure that these new units that is going to get developed as a result of these zoning changes will be a. you know, how do I ensure that these new units that is going to get developed as a result of these zoning changes will be affordable by design? Is that we need to consider increasing our density so that we can get more dwelling unit on a per acre basis, including the downtown mixed use and the corridor mixed use and the residential mixed use area? And increase the four-area ratio so that you can actually get more square footage out of each parcel. But consider putting some sort of a cap on a per-unit size so that, you know, we can ensure that we can build a certain amount of smaller units. Now, the benefit to that is, number one, we can ensure a certain amount of affordability. And we can also ensure that, as we discussed, you know, some earlier, we want to encourage, you know, sort of more of a daytime population. We want to encourage the lift-work scenario, which I fully support. And how to bring more people in into our city that will be able to take advantage of our downtown, you know, commercial district and be able to support our local businesses. You know, so if people who has a little bit more disposable income would be beneficial. They tend to not need that many bedrooms because they may or may not necessarily have families. And so, you know, having a one-bedroom, two-bedroom apartments, you know, in a neighborhood between five to eight hundred square feet, right? But you have a few more of it, you know, in the given building rather than having a two thousand square feet condominium, right, in a downtown district would certainly be something that I would want to encourage. And and that's my idea of affordability by design. You know, you don't necessarily have to tax them on BMR units, but to ensure that they build smaller units by itself, right? Then in itself, it's going to create more affordability and more opportunity for people to come into our city. So that's one avenue that I'd like you guys to look into. Second of all, you know, following up on Councilmember Hollerber as well as Papen mentioned, you know, how do we, you know, incentivize these developers coming in to put in more lift, either lift-work or purely co-working space on a second floor, you know, on top of a, on top of a fifteen-foot commercial storefront, right? And if they were to do that, how do we incentivize them either through FAR or height limit or density to encourage this type of development coming in so that, you know, we can actually bring in more businesses, startup businesses, you know, smaller tech company, for example, smaller startup companies so that we can increase our daytime traffic. I mean, you know, encouraging more businesses such as this coming into our city would help revitalize our economy, bring in more tax revenue, more daytime traffic, and it doesn't put as much burden on the city's resources. So those are some of the ideas that I wanted you to explore. We can certainly use FAR and density as a bonus to encourage this type of, you know, second-floor business, commercial-type development. So those are the things that comes to mind immediately. I'm sure as we go over this whole package, which is a lot of information in there today and great work, by the way, you know, I'm sure we're going to have a lot more of it as we, you know, sort of digest the entire plan. One area to consider is on the immediately east of the El Camino Real on the east side, like for example, the Hemlock Avenue, whether or not you guys have any spent any time considering, you know, what the zoning requirement on that neighborhood should be. So I would encourage you to look into that and come back with a proposal as to how that area could be enhanced and, you know, in terms of future development. As, you know, that area is so close to transit, it's walking distance to the transit, and as TOD one getting built, they could literally walk to an intermodal station. So there might be an area of opportunity here that you can consider. I'm sure I have more, but I want to yield my others. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Question, following up on on Councilman Fung. If, when I looked, and Darcy, maybe you can pull up that really scary El Camino Real 3D drawing that makes us look like we're suddenly a big city on that one. And my question is, if we allow eighty-five feet and fifty-five feet, depending on the side of the street, and then a developer comes in and says, well, I'm going to use three thirty, Senate Bill three thirty, Senate Bill three thirty, and I'm going to maximize my density but not give any community benefits. Are are we protected from that by doing density this big? I I just feel very bruised in our inability to get better community benefits. And then my other follow-up question on this is, when we're building buildings up and down El Camino Real, none of these people have park space. So are we allowed, in the quest for making RENA, to actually have a place where they can breathe in in public open space that isn't a parking lot?
Sure. So I'll answer that. So I was a little hesitant to include these two slides because they show massing and they show absolute build-out. And in reality, this vision won't ever come to fruition because the way economics and land use development work is that, you know, it it doesn't all happen at once and it's over a slow period of time. But to answer one of your questions, all the new development is required to pay impact fees. And as a result of the infrastructure analysis that's included in this plan that we're working on now, we will be looking at new impact fees to cover anticipated needs for this new development for capital infrastructure and facilities. So they, all the projects would pay the city's impact fees that are adopted and it's, and I do anticipate that we'll have revised impact fees before your after-plan gets adopted. That includes park fees. The the majority of our impact fees are park fees that would allow the city to acquire or rehabilitate existing parkland. And then there are requirements for onsite open space, such as in the Millbrae Station area. Specific plan, it's ten percent, and that allows for onsite recreational facilities, pools, dog walks, fitness courts, walking paths, et cetera, onsite that would be privately built and privately maintained. But to answer one of your questions, which is, so, well, can't they just come in and build higher? What we did to examine these heights is look at typical development. So right now, we have a lot of projects in the pipeline that are looking at at eighty-five feet. Again, that's, as the city manager mentioned, the height under construction out at the Gateway TOD project at BART. So we know it's market-tested around eighty-five feet. It's more atypical in this setting to go higher than that. But that's what the market is trending to towards right now. And what we want to do is set out realistic heights so that it's not constantly this game that developers play. You know, it's just, it's just a tool that they can use where they can increase the heights through state law. We want to have realistic heights so that the city can analyze that build-out and ensure that our fees and our infrastructure is sized for this. So we wanted realistic heights, realistic densities, and that's what you see here. There are still tools that developers can use to change those under state law, but I will say, I think we we tried to make to make these realistic and right-sized for the market as we see it now. We have an economist on our team who reviewed these. The model that Puna mentioned has been testing market capability and the economics of this, along with things you don't see here, which is the parking and the open space and the setbacks to analyze it. So we think these are are what we'll see for development. And again, we've input existing projects that are under review now. And we think they're realistics.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple more questions. I want to make sure that the Vice Mayor, I'm looking for the Vice Mayor, and then we'll go to Planning Commission.
I I just want to say that I think the plan is brilliant. And I got to be honest, when I took the slides and I looked at them, I thought, oh, cool. And then the presentation has have, has my head spinning. So I'm taking all these questions in, and a lot of them have been answered, but I'm sure I'll have plenty for you in the future.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Del Negro? And then Commissioner Jean-Joe.
I think Ruben still has his hand up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Go ahead, Councilman.
Ruben, you're muted.
Sorry, thought I unmuted myself. Just one more quick question on this slide with the building massings and heights. I noticed some of the buildings are still shown as, you know, one-story, for example, the Sixteen Mile House, the Our Lady of Lebanon Church, I think also the Masola Building on the other side. Are these buildings, does this envision some type of a preservation ordinance for historic buildings? Why were those buildings not shown as as being demolished and going higher?
Well, Darcy, I can answer this question. As we said, the purpose of this model was not to show full build-out. You know, I think we are looking at the horizon of this specific, a specific plan and you know, a twenty-year horizon and what is the likelihood of redevelopment on various parcels, right? So we have not assumed that every single parcel will have redevelopment on it. And since there are these, you know, older buildings, we have just indicated that they are there and we haven't necessarily assumed that they're just going to be demolished.
And and to follow up on the other question about a historic preservation ordinance, the general plan would not include that because it's a municipal code ordinance, but as an implementation item post-general Plan adoption, the city would likely work on that. But there are also protections in state law governing historic structures that would lead to scrutiny of that.
That sounds good. Yeah, I think it would be important to to look into that. I know we have some historic buildings that would be beneficial to be preserved, for example, the Masola Building, there's the old Millbrae Jewelry Building that could sort of add to the quaintness of the downtown and the corridor that sad to lose at some point. So we encourage, you know, the growth and the build-out that's shown here is important to consider preservation. Thank you.
Building on to what Councilman Hollerber said earlier in the presentation, you said that the corner lots are really critical and could look really great with bigger buildings on them, but the Millbrae Jewelers Building, Pete's Coffee Building, those are what give us a little bit of soul left. And I'm very uncomfortable with waiting until the completed general plan to start working on a preservation ordinance. We've already lost part of our history at eleven hundred El Camino, and I would hate to lose more. That gives us a reason that we don't look like any other city built in the sixties or seventies on that. Okay, Commissioner Del Negro.
All right, on slide eighteen, they show some respective heights for some examples of buildings. And it ranges from the up to eighty-five feet, if you don't mind pulling that up for a second. You know, you're giving away increased volume and height, but in these figures, these images, these buildings themselves, it's the same number of floors across all buildings. I'm worried about giving away a ton of height and still getting the same number of potential units in that height. And should there be some level requirement for a height, number of floors, if you're going to go up to eighty-five feet? We're giving away a shadow with the same time not gaining increased number of potential floor space or units.
The number of floors are going to be determined by the construction type. And if you go, you know, if it is a type-three construction, which is two levels of concrete podium with, and, you know, masonry walls with with the wood with it, then the maximum you can go is seven stories. And eighty-five feet kind of translates approximately to seven stories. Now, the maximum building height also taken into account parapets and other, you know, pertinences. So that's, it's not, I mean, all of the maximum height limits kind of assume parapets and other pertinences in it. So usually, the the floor height, the number of floors are going to be determined by whether it's a type-two construction or sorry, type-five construction or type-three construction.
Yeah, and one other thing to add to that, a reason that we probably will recommend regulating height instead of number of floors is because the, depending on the land use, the floor-to-floor heights are different. So for residential, as I think one of the commissioners said earlier, the floor-to-floor height is ten feet typically. For office, that floor height increases because you have to have a a taller interstitial space for ventilation and so forth. And that can be thirteen, fourteen, or even up to fifteen feet floor-to-floor. So you're going to get fewer floors within a given height envelope for office. And since we're trying to allow and encourage both of those land uses, so we have a mix of land uses, just giving a height envelope allows for that flexibility.
Yeah, and then I'll also just add one more thing is that the maximum building height also assumes flexibility of the ground floor. Because sometimes the developers, if they do go for a vertical, you know, vertically stacked parking, which is the direction in which some of the newer construction is going, then you need a taller ground floor than fifteen feet. And and, you know, some, you have to go up to eighteen to twenty feet ground floor, which actually also allows for higher quality either retail or commercial office space at the ground floor. So it it's just taking into account, you know, the various types of uses and construction types that are likely to occur, and it provides that flexibility for a developer to come in and make that decision within that envelope.
Another question I have here is about the quarter-mixed use, the sixty-five feet facing broadways and railroads as a limit. What is the reason for facing a railroad that you have a height limit? Is there a standard there based upon the railroad itself?
It's also stepping down towards the, towards the eastern neighborhood. So it's just creating a little bit more transition and a step down towards the neighborhoods. And the railroad also happens to be there. I mean, it's really driven by the by the neighborhoods.
By the residential instead, okay. And does that trump for the large parcel? Obviously, this picture shows that it does. Saying on a large parcel that fronting the railroad, you still have to be sixty-five feet in limit, even though the overall large parcels in that location can go up to one hundred and twenty-five. Is there a setback from that line for those parcels?
Probably a a step back along El Camino Real, and that's what we would be developing in more detail in the, you know, as we draft the development standards. So as I mentioned before, the the larger parcels here allow us to have some portion of, let's say, the interior of the parcel at one hundred and twenty-five feet of height, but still allows space for step backs along critical frontages.
And then another question I have is on the block between Ludeman, is a perfect figure for this, and Helen. Sorry, between Ludeman on the north and Medaglin on the south, Magnolia on the west and Broadway on the east. This block has some commercial business on it, has also the the church, the Catholic Church, and it has some residential for, I believe it's an elderly facility here on that block. Why is that not included in the overall plan downtown? Because if there is commercial there?
So this boundary here is the specific plan area boundary. And as Jim said earlier, it's actually part of the priority development area, which is part of the A-BAG's Plan Bay Area. So we worked with A-BAG on this many years ago, probably over a decade, and it's part of Plan Bay Area, which allows it to be partially governed by that document and the regional framework. So the city didn't, cannot change these boundaries. There are areas such as what Councilmember Fung mentioned, such as the Hemlock area that we will be studying further in the future, but not right now. So that's that area that you mentioned, we could study more in the future and look at land use changes. But right now, this specific plan area boundary again is in line with the, what's called the PDA, Priority Development Area, which comes from Plan Bay Area. And that's why, for example, the city qualified for a grant, very substantial grant from A-BAG MTC to fund this effort.
Madam Mayor, could I, sorry to interrupt.
Yes, I was going to call you next. City Attorney Michael Conneron, go ahead.
I just want to be sure. We do need to have public comment for this, at this meeting. I noticed you have a number of members of the public. I would suggest you leave maybe ten minutes before the council meeting and perhaps allocate two minutes each. So we may want to have the others finish up to provide that opportunity.
I had been given previous that we'd have the public members, if we ran out of time. Actually, I had been given previous that we'd have the public members, if we ran out of time, provide written comment. But um, sure, we can try that. Uh, that means Commissioner Del Negro and Jean-Joe, we have about seven minutes.
I have one last question. Um, and that is a kind of a naive question about, yes, we're looking at up, are we having to have a standard for down? As far as how deep um our constructions, is anything there we have to worry about?
But usually that's driven by environmental analyses regarding water table and then just the cost of construction. So usually that's analyzed in the sequel process and the geotechnical studies that are done when we examine the projects.
Exactly, well, just to clarify, excluding economics, economics are not evaluated in environmental review.
Commissioner Del Negro, are you all all set then?
Yes, that was it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Jean, uh Chair, Jean-Joe.
Thank you. I'll try to be as quick as I can. I have quite a few, but um just keeping to the chart pretty much. Uh, if you can pull up slide fifteen, please, that would be great. I, just to address uh the areas lining El Camino on the west side, south of Taylor, that's considered the downtown mixed-use district. That area on the chart is showing that that should be kept at fifty-five feet. But then when you go to, on here on fifteen, I'm gonna close my, um, on this slide, it's showing as sixty-five feet. So I just wanted to kind of, and and there is nothing in the charts that say anything regarding um having it be eighty-five feet if it's facing El Camino, if it's in the downtown district, mixed-use district.
Oh, good. Okay, noted.
Yep, so I just wanted to to note that because that's, I believe it should stay at fifty-five, that area. Um, even if it's facing El Camino, or if you're gonna make it, let it go to eighty-five, it should be in this chart, if the chart on page eleven. It's not consistent, so um I do have a concern. And then on the same parcel for the corridor mixed use, there is that lining Broadway. This middle section, north of now, I'm also guess, north of new, I'm trying to get my cursor. Um, lining El Camino, you have that whole big block of eighty-five foot. Um, whereas in, so in the, um, in here, it says that if it's facing Broadway, fronting Broadway, then it goes down to sixty-five. I think it would be good, I'm assuming that you're talking about maybe doing what, making it so it steps down to be sixty-five when it gets to Broadway. Is that correct? If so, I'd like to see that somewhere here as well. So um, the the slide that you had that showed the Broadway, that kind of brings me to the slide that you had, Broadway. That one is only for fifty-five feet, and I believe that's for the downtown area only. It doesn't address this corridor mixed use, because if you're lying for the eighty-five feet in a corridor mixed use, that's not um, you know, that's not gonna work. So um, if you're saying it's gonna go step back down towards sixty-five feet when it gets to Broadway, then we, I would like to see a scenario of that and making sure that we have good setback, a step down even there. So um, trying to do this very quickly. Uh, residential mixed use in the chart on page slide twelve. Uh, it talks about residential mixed use. I must, it sounds like here from the description that this is um only residential, but we're doing a mix of residential uses. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, okay. Um, it's confusing to me because when I hear mixed use and residential together, I'm thinking retailer office on the bottom and then a mixed, mixed use, not mixed residential uses. So I I think it would be good to change, uh to clarify that term or something because it's confusing. Unless you are talking about first floor being activated with a retail office, commercial, some kind of a commercial use. But it sounds like that's not what you're, what you're saying. Also, if you can go back to that slide fifteen, uh, the portion of the corridor, not the corridor. The portion basically, um, that's, that's backing to the Hemlock neighborhood is showing as eighty-five feet. Um, I'd like, I think that there should be the step back there as well, step down there toward the houses, because I mean, as it is, just, you know, the height that we have here and the buildings that we have here backing down to the residential homes, that has been not a good thing for the the neighborhood. And if you're envisioning eighty-five feet buildings there now, um, I know it might not happen right away, but it's not, it's not a good thing for the neighborhoods in back. So I'm not sure how to deal with that, but I just think it, it, to me, it seems really high. And um, they're going to lose all the sunlight from the afternoon on if you're, if you're going in that neighborhood. So I'd like to, I I understand that, you know, housing, I think it's a huge issue. I understand we need to try to build in density as much as we can. I just think that we need to give some consideration to those neighborhoods. So um, I would say, I have a couple more things, but um my main concern would be Broadway and the Hemlock neighborhoods, those being, you know, those being accounted for. Because, you know, just looking at on on this map, looking at Broadway and thinking we basically have, you know, eighty-five on one side possibility or sixty-five, you know, on one side, it's gonna lose a lot of the character and a lot of our activities are done in, on Broadway. I don't need to tell everybody that. Um, and then just one quick one is the examples of the building height that uh Commissioner Del Negro mentioned. For me, I had an issue with that as well in the sense of these buildings all look the same, even though you're going from fifty-five to eighty-five feet. So it feels a little bit um misrepresented, it it's not really representing well the differences of the heights on there, because it looks like they are, I mean, if you didn't have the labels on it, I would not be able to tell much of the difference. And maybe that's me, but I think when we do have examples and come back later, I would like to see a little, uh, have a better idea of what, uh, maybe photos that somehow show a better of a idea of scale. Uh, and maybe even information regarding the buildings we have now, for instance. So I'm in the Solow Building right now and I'm looking out on, uh, toward El Camino and Broadway and thinking about how this is all gonna look. And again, I understand the need for housing and RVNA numbers and density. I get all of that. I just think we need to be very, very careful and all, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Joe, a great comment. We have uh one more Commissioner, Commissioner Wong. And let me do a time check here. We're at uh six fifty. We do have a full council agenda, but we are not gonna get the six people um in the waiting list and Poonam to be able to comment back to somebody, I think. Uh, so likely Elaine, City Clerk, I think we're gonna start ten to fifteen minutes late at council meeting. Go ahead, Commissioner Wong.
Uh, thank you. Good night, good evening to everybody. So just one comment, just one observation on this is that I'm trying to understand what the character of Millbrae is gonna be after all of this is done and if it actually gets built in. And the question I have is that it seems like we don't really have a gravity or a center that really is the focal point of our city. The biggest buildings are on up and down on the ends of El Camino. And if uh, you know, gravity works at all and people gravitate towards large, heavy objects like uh I don't know, it's law of gravity, then they're gonna be going to to these far ends of El Camino and see that's where all the the weight is. And then if if we have these modern mixed-use buildings up and down El Camino, will there be an attraction for people to go to an older Broadway that has much less height and uh older buildings? I don't know. Uh, I'm just trying to envision what this is gonna be like and how it's gonna work and what people will think of our city. Uh, one thing that I would uh think we might consider is if we are building a new city, we might think about building a whole new civic center. I think that uh the civic center area, along with the Safeway, the Office Depot, uh, the living spaces, that area, if anything, I think that's really a big centerpiece of our city. And that if we were to have a focal point, that would be a place to develop maybe a whole new district, like a civic center that has much higher height. And if it has much higher height, then maybe people will gravitate and then they will think, oh, that's Millbrae. That that, those large commercial spaces there or that area right next to City Hall, that's what Millbrae is all about. And then, I don't know, maybe, maybe they having lower heights along Sixteen Mile House and Broadway, maybe that'll provide uh more air and breathing space, as mentioned, so that people can come out of these uh large residential developments and and see something uh more relaxing and small and less congested. But I would just think, make that one suggestion is that what are people gonna focus on uh when we have this developed?
Thank you, Commissioner Wong. Um, if there are no further comments from Commissioners or Councilmembers. Oh, Maureen, uh Council, Commissioner Davis.
Um, clearly, we don't have a lot of time, but what I want to say is just a couple of comments. Um, a lot of thought and work has gone into this plan. And what can't be demonstrated in a, you know, twenty-slide PowerPoint are all of the assumptions, all of the research, all of the details that are feeding into the numbers and proposals that have been given to us. So obviously, there will be a longer document in the future. But I just wanted to to know, what I felt good about is every time somebody had a question, the team had answers for, oh, yes, we've considered that and this is why we went here and this is why we went here. So I'm feeling very good about what we're seeing tonight. And um and just a reminder that all communities evolve. Millbrae has evolved over its entire history and we're gonna continue to evolve. So, and this plan is meant to give us direction on how that evolution happens. So thanks to everybody for all the work that you did to put into this so far.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. All right, last call, council and Commissioners.
Mayor, if if I may, real quick, I don't have the have raise hand feature since I host, unfortunately. So ju- just real quick, a couple of things. I think everybody knows this, but Millbrae has a significant amount of underutilized land. And so this is taking advantage of that underutilized land, moving forward with uh our arena numbers and how we accommodate that, how we accommodate um, you know, density. And I think, you know, picking up on what Alan said, and maybe we should have more discussion on this, is is Millbrae can become that really great urbanized, urban village um that is well-designed, both in terms of i- it's, it's aesthetic, but um the fabric, right? The the urban design aspect, so walkable streets, street trees, street lights, aesthetically designed, pleasing environment. So that's what, that's what the vision is. And you can get that through, you know, urbanized and and urbanizing of a community. And and that's, that's what we're shooting for here.
Thank you, City Manager. Okay, Members of the Public, I think I see five. Um, if Maureen Davis's hand is is actually down and Michael Conneran's hand is down, I think I see six uh or five. So uh, how about a minute and a half? Because we are now going to be late for council, and I will start with the person that's listed as Tina.
Tina O?
Tina Angers.
Yeah.
If you could please give your full name.
It's uh Christina Angers, I go by Tina. Um, thank you for the countdown. Um, so I own the Dillon Hotel, just um the one block south of uh Millbrae Avenue. It's the forgotten Millbrae. And um, so I think a couple of concerns I have. Um, one is that it, you're looking at redevelopment and as someone, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't remember who mentioned it, but it was um, you know, it's a hotel and uh taking away and maybe that aspect that we bring to the city, I sometimes, I think people forget that it is a revenue generating source for the city. Um, and one that does uh bring quite a bit of of revenue in. And also, it's a history too. I mean, you know, yes, cities do change and they do develop. Um, but taking that into consideration and hoping that we maintain whatever happens, that that hotel is taken into consideration. One other issue that I really have is traffic. You're gonna be bringing in or, you know, even two thousand units, if you think two thousand units, you're talking potentially four to five thousand people. And of those two thousand people, trying to get that through Millbrae Avenue or down El Camino through Burlingame or perhaps through um the northern part of Millbrae is is an issue. And, you know, with that development at the Bard Station, I can already see that's gonna be an issue. So I just hope that that's taken into consideration and maybe density is, you know, somehow, you know, looked at.
Thank you, and my condolences for the loss of your founder.
Thank you.
Um, Alice Quong.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Thank you. I totally agree uh what does the speaker say. And I am living in Milbury twenty, over twenty years. I am economy-wise, here the Commissioner too. I've been participating some of the meeting long ago, since long, long time ago when uh uh Mr. Dan Quick was a mayor long time ago. But up today, I've grown to see a more update of the general plan. And as I know, the past plan was built in nineteen seventy-six, now it's almost forty years. So hopefully, this general plan spent a lot of energy, a lot of money, a lot of effort to build it and be, have another one hundred years in the future for the vision. But when I look at earlier for the um, the plan, we saw the different coloring for in between El Camino. It seems the vision is still very limited. I be, I believe all our different team of the council are being tried hard to build Milbury as a more like next to the airport, bring more people uh to our community, to spend money, to make our city more rich. But if you see, you know, El Camino, which is not going to have a people to walk from uh like, for example, like sixty miles and then walk to a cross street to do shopping, because El Camino is a major traffic, you know, a law. So we, people will be majority, like for example, in this uh Manonia side, Broadway side. But now we only have a two, two uh, two street is going to be a commercial. So make our city in the future for the longer.
Thank you, Ms. Quong.
Very small.
Uh, um, and again, I believe that the city would love to get written comments that staff can then reply to. If we could move on to Nathan Chan.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity to address you all today. Um, I wanted to talk about at least two goals that were brought up in this meeting, affordability and green space and how uh density, units per acre factors into that. I'm gonna be talking about some uh uh work done by the Sierra Club, uh by Sierra Club volunteers, but I'm certainly not speaking on behalf of the Sierra Clubs. Um, we uh looked at two projects, one in San Mateo and one in south San Francisco. The San Mateo uh project was on a fourteen and a half acre site, uh but was only able to build sixty-six units per acre and therefore only offered ten percent very low income below market rate units out of nine hundred sixty-one units. Um, by contrast, in south San Francisco, on the Public Utility Commission site, on five point nine acres, uh they were able to build eight hundred units with twenty percent uh very low and low income. And they were also able to accommodate just as mu- many acres of public open space on that site as they were on the larger San Mateo site. So um, this is, this shows that um limited, limiting the density per acre can actually uh affect our ability to meet affordability goals as well as green space. And that should be something that you all should think about about when guiding the next phase of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Uh, Mr. Crab.
Yes, good evening, uh, Madam Mayor and Members of the Council. Uh, yeah, I have a couple of questions and things, points here. One is um, uh, I think you should consider eliminating the idea of density limits uh and just use the Form-based code. It was kind of mentioned before that that's a way to do it. And I think the density limits really confuse people uh uh because was explained by one of the staff, uh the consultants, that uh the density is kind of irrelevant. Uh, not the, that's the, the look of the building is totally irrelevant to the density of the building, depending on the size of the unit. So I would eliminate, eliminate any criteria for maximum densities, but keep, still keep the heights and all the uh other requirements, setbacks and so on. Uh, number two is, there was a comment about the density bonus and whether you establish the heights of the buildings and then someone comes in with a density bonus and the buildings can go higher. And I think that's a good point. And when we were looking at the uh Millbrae Bard Station, uh, the the code was set up specifically to set up a basic density with the, the conception that the density bonuses and so on would add up to the density the city really wanted. And I think you should think that way, not set a density and find out that you, you know, it's going to be exceeded. And lastly, I think Anne Snyder's comment about more open space for the people to go live in these high-density units, you need to definitely think about that and maybe designate certain parcels that should be public spaces and try to get public, the city to buy those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe. And I think it was Mike Dunham. Please go ahead, Mr. Dunham.
Good evening, Council and Commissioners and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Hold on one second. City Clerk, did we reset the clock? Okay, sorry.
Cool, no problem. Thank you for making sure of my time. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm tuned in late, so I missed the beginning part of the presentation. But one thing I'm wondering, looking at sort of the overall unit counts in terms of like what RINA requires of you and what seems to be sort of feasible in downtown already with some of this proposed zoning, is affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is now a legal, legally codified in California state law and is something that the state of California is looking at very closely when evaluating the housing elements. I'm worried when I hear language like it's important to protect existing neighborhoods. I think that, that kind of language is exactly not affirmatively furthering fair housing. And I think what, you'll face pretty serious problems if you decide to put all your RINA allocations just in downtown. It's actually really important to have at least some opportunities for folks who can afford a detached, single-family home to buy or rent, that they have multifamily housing opportunities outside of the downtown core and throughout the city. Recently passed SB nine helps that a little bit, but I think you need higher densities in at least some areas throughout the city. So I'd encourage you to look at things like corner lots or lots near schools or parks as opportunities for smaller, medium-sized apartment buildings where you could have a more economically integrated neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. I think what you missed is right now we're working on the downtown specific plan, not the full general plan. So your comments, we do have mixed neighborhoods throughout the city on that. James Regomez, but that'll be handled under the general plan, not under the specific plan. Go ahead, Mr. Regomez.
Good evening, Mayor Snyder, honorable council members, commissioners, hard-working city staff, presenters and members of the public. I live in San Bruno, but I'm speaking on behalf of the San Mateo Building and Construction Trade Council tonight. The Building Trade Council comprises of twenty-five unions, sixteen thousand highly skilled men and women. I'm glad to be involved in the conversation early as you put together this specific plan. I would like to offer some opinions that you, of our members, that you have an opportunity to create a, a great working policy and a great document here, ordinance, to ensure, and one of the things that you may want to look at is ensuring that developers, contractors are pre-qualified, ensuring that they have no fines and no past practices of taking advantage of workers as well as putting in language that requires the developers and contractors to use workers from a joint apprenticeship training committee. Joint apprenticeship training committees have equal parts of union management as well as owners of companies, along with the state to come up with the criterias to ensure that these buildings will be right the first time, on time and on budget, and follow the work and family platform, earning a decent wage. Even though we earn a decent wage, half our money goes to rents and mortgages, healthcare for you and the family, optical and dental as well. Something to retire on, those retirement money, those retirement dollars are recycled back into our community through municipal bonds. And finally, education. We fund one of the largest educations in the United States. So that would be good language to put in your policy. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Regomez. I see, hold on. Elaine, do you have anybody on the phone?
I do not see anyone on the phone.
And I don't see any other hands raised, so closing public comment. Staff, you heard some additional ideas from the public. I know you're taking notes. Is there anything that you'd like to do in closing? And with that, before we, when you close, then give me a minute to give instructions before council starts.
Mayor, no, no further comments from staff at this point.
Okay. But again, for the public watching on TV, if they have questions or comments on the downtown specific plan on density and FAR, please address them to what would be the best way to send those comments in.
We have a great new email address for planning, all things planning in Millbury, planning@ci.milbury.ca.us.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, it is seven oh eight. We will start City Council. Council, I know you probably all needed break. I need to get a glass of water. How about we start at seven twelve, four minutes, everybody? See you back in four minutes. We'll start promptly at seven twelve. Thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you planning Commissioners and staff.
All right, everyone. I just want to remind everyone, this stream is still being broadcast and you are being recorded as well. So if you want to turn off your screen and mute yourself, that'll be great.